Resolution accepting the minutes of the 6/11/13 monthly public meeting. The move? You want to close? Also like to set a public hearing for July 9th for a request for a stop sign on Aspen Road and Daisy Drive. Fullway stop sign. Second by any? All fail or opposed? Okay, they're ready to public hearing on this draft environment impact statement? We just have to ask the courts if we need the public notice.
Public notice is hereby given that the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Mastic Beach has scheduled a public hearing for Wednesday, June 26, 2013, at 5:00 p.m. at the Town of Brookhaven Cemetery Nutrition Center, 369 Neighborhood Road, Mastic Beach, New York. The purpose of the public hearing is to consider comments regarding the draft generic environment impact statement, head by the Village of Mastic Beach, proposed adoption of its first zoning code, a type 1 action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. The Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Mastic Beach, 427 Neighborhood Road, Mastic Beach, New York, has been designated the lead agency for review of proposed action under SECRE. Copies of the draft generic environment impact statement are available for reviewing in Village Hall, 227 Neighborhood Road, Mastic Beach, New York. Interested persons will be afforded the opportunity to be heard. Written comments regarding issues to be addressed in the DEGIS will be accepted at 4:00 p.m. July 15, 2013. For further information, please contact Mayor William Yandi, 427 Neighborhood Road, Mastic Beach, New York. Phone number is 631-281-2366. This notice has been prepared in accordance with Article 8 of the Environmental Conservation Act.
Alright, so I think the, yeah, I think that the notice speaks for itself. I am the environmental consultant. It was retained by the village to assist with the preparation of the draft environment impact statement. We reviewed all of the minutes of the commission meetings that went into the formulation of recommendations. The village determined to issue a positive declaration of the CRN EIS, which is the highest level of environmental review. A draft EIS is intended to identify the relevant issues, identify the nature of the proposed project, and assess any potential adverse environmental impacts that may result from. The village also conducted a scoping meeting so that the public had an opportunity to have comments on what would be included in the draft environment impact statement, the draft GEIS. And so as the notice said, tonight is to hear from the public. Typically, comments are restricted to the specifics of the document itself. I understand that the meeting tonight has been called for the purpose of also opening up the public hearing on the zoning map amendments that are pending and are the subject of the environmental impact statement. So as the notice said, there's a comment period after this evening for written comments, where the public can submit anything written. All of these comments will be addressed in a final environmental impact statement. I've heard people say that, you know, the draft EIS is not a perfect document. It's intended to inform the public and provide a forum for exploration and examination of impacts, alternative to the proposed project, and that the SECRE record is not complete until all of the relevant and substantive comments are addressed in a final environmental impact statement. So our office has also been contacted to assist the village in preparing that response to comments that are received tonight and all those comments received in writing. An FEIS, or final generic EIS, would be reviewed and accepted by the village board at some point in the future, and the 10-day comment period has elapsed before any decisions can be made. So tonight is not to make any decisions, it's really to hear from the public, gain insight into concerns, and address them through the environmental review process. So I think the mayor is going to tell members of the public that would like to make comments. We don't expect to get into a lot of back and forth, we can help with some clarification. You know, we're really not here to answer in-depth questions, we are here to receive comments and clarify things where the village board would like us to do so, and then, as I said, everything will be addressed in writing in the future.
So we can't, what we're gonna do to give everybody a fair chance that wants to speak, we're gonna allow one question at a time for two minutes. And you wanna sign in or just have them spell their name out?
Just an absolute.
Okay.
My name's Tom Fox. The question I have is, the work of the zoning commission is complete. If there are changes to what the zoning commission submitted, does that now cause a disconnect with doing the environmental impact study before those changes are subject to public comment? Is this kinda add a sequence, or should we just deal with the zoning, get everything out there, and then do the environmental impact? And if we don't do it that way, if we are gonna make changes to the zoning and have public hearings on that, doesn't that now make a disconnect between what the DGIS is evaluating and what we're, I guess at that point in time, looking actually to be the zoning?
I think that's worth farfiling.
Yeah, absolutely.
The way I see it, the zoning commission hit a tremendous amount of work, and that forms the proposed project. So that's exactly what was analyzed in the environmental impact statement. The purpose, in my mind, of the SECRE process is to kind of take that into the public arena, assess the environmental impacts, and get public input. So I think that the EIS process is very well suited for that. I don't really see a disconnect, I think it actually adds to the information gathering. One thing that I said at the scoping meeting was that this document also gives the village a tremendous amount of information. We put together a whole geographic information system database on resources in the village, and there's information in here that the zoning commission may not have been aware of, that are useful now in the ongoing discussion. So what typically happens is, if there are comments, and if there are potential significant adverse impacts identified in the draft EIS with respect to zoning changes, in addressing them, if they can be mitigated, we may mold the project for the purpose of the final EIS. And ultimately, you know, this board makes the decision on the zoning, but now it'll be with the benefit of the whole environmental review process, public input, potential modifications that can occur and would be addressed in the final EIS in response to comments, and that will ultimately form the full record that will give the board a basis to make a decision. They'll have to adopt findings, which will basically document that the EIS process has been completed, and go through all the resource categories and indicate, you know, if there are potential impacts, how they're mitigated, and what the ultimate balance is of environment, economic, and the weighing and balancing of those issues. So that's kind of a long-winded answer, but I think that the process is well-served to, you know, get us the information needed for this board to make the decision. And also, your comment may be a little premature, because we don't know what the rest of the comments are, and if there will be changes.
Yes?
Dave?
Frank Appiello. The zoning is a living thing, it's gonna continually change over time. I mean, we can only imagine how many times Patch Oaks changed their zoning. You don't do a SECRE every time they change a zoning, do you?
Actually, some level of SECRE review is necessary every time. I mean, there are such things as type 2 actions, which are listed specifically by the state and won't have any significant impact, they're predetermined, but just about any action that's either a type 1 specifically listed as potentially having an impact or an unlisted action requires some level of SECRE.
You don't have to start from the beginning again.
No, you don't. It would never be this big, only because you're, this happens once in a village's lifetime, or a town's lifetime. But the Town of Brookhaven, zoning is a living, breathing thing, it happens all the time. The Town of Brookhaven has, sometimes of the six zoning code amendments a meeting. Patrick takes with the zoning code almost every day, so does every other village. Fort Jefferson takes with their village code. They do it all the time, zoning changes all the time as your needs change. No community stuck in 1934 when they enacted the zoning. Yes, Ben?
I'll be by all, I was on the zoning commission, and I have this one major issue here. We had public hearings on what we interpreted zoning to be, and we took the public, you know, comments very seriously, and we made amendments and changes as we went along with the zoning. Now with this new, with the SECRE and this information coming up that the board, the commission was not aware of, now all our zoning that we put in, is that all up for change now? Is it, is the whole thing gonna be revamped? Is there major changes in what we decided?
The thing's actually been changed, yeah. I mean, you know, as I, we mentioned and discussed the design.
Well, I know minor changes and tweaks along the line, but I'm talking about, you know, we had made major changes, and we had took the public, you know, comment very seriously, and we made changes to wetlands and to environmental, you know, very sensitive areas. These environmental areas are subject to change with this new impact that you're doing?
Yeah, so far we haven't changed any boundaries or any, any of the language at all in the actual proposed regulations. I think part of the process, as Chick mentioned earlier, is to try to get comments and to do the analysis on the, under SECRE, and once we have all that together, we're gonna basically produce a final environmental impact statement, and then, when we have that produced in conjunction with any changes that we'll have to make to the actual code.
Well, that's what I'm saying with this environmental impact, is there gonna be major changes to the zoning that we had, you know, already established?
I have the answer, that's gonna be no. It's not gonna be major at all. I think that there are gonna be, you know, again, this is, this is a process, as the board has to go through it both from an environmental perspective, but from a legal perspective. Once this is done, as Chick said, this board's gonna have to have another set of public hearings. You guys had, I think, 16 something meetings, and you guys put a ton of blood, sweat, tears into it.
Absolutely.
And the work product speaks for itself. It's excellent, it's excellent. So there'll be changes that are gonna have to happen, and we're gonna take public input as comes in public hearings, once the environmental section is over, there're gonna be a lot, there are a lot of bright minds, even in this room.
Oh, absolutely.
So we'll get greater impact, you know, we'll go through it, even in this room.
That's a great thought.
I was talking to myself, Tom. Excuse me.
Chris, can I ask you a question? You sat in on the zoning meeting. Was the zoning board made aware of all the processes that would take place? They were made aware that every step of the way that would have to be, is that correct?
And I think one thing that should be mentioned is, you know, ultimately, this is the only board that can enact the zoning. So while the, you know, to me, the zoning commission is making recommendations to this board, based on a lot of hard work, but this is the only board that can act as a lead agency under SECRE and ultimately adopt that zoning. So we have to go through this process.
We were, we were under the understanding that there would be minor changes as the trustees got there together and got other information, that there would be little tweaks, but I was just concerned about any major changes that we had, you know, made with the public's knowledge and take that information and put it into our, you know, into our zoning recommendation. You know, we just, I just was, you know, wanted to know that, that they were gonna throw all our work out and start all, with the SECRE and start.
This whole document is based on all the work of the commission.
Absolutely not, and I said it when you guys turned it over to us, you guys did a fabulous job, you took a lot of pressure off of us, you guys did all the footwork, and again, we did say maybe some fine tuning, I know there's a lot of rumors flying out there. You know, rumors are great, I just wish the people, when they hear rumors, they come and ask us, because.
You know, as I, when I speak, you know, I don't speak off the board, I do speak, I like to talk to the people that are gonna make the answers, you know. Thank you.
Let me get more first.
So, not to be a stickler, but the website, the top header said that this meeting was at 6:00 p.m., and then in the body of the notice it said 5:00 p.m., but if you just read the top, I mean, the two things contradict each other, what's happening at 6:00 p.m.? Because at the top of the notice on the website, it says zoning meeting is at 6:00 p.m.
I have no idea.
Well, so it's confusing, people might come at 6:00 now.
Okay, so what'd you say until 6:00?
It's not me, you're the zoning board, so I'm just saying that.
Well, we'll just sit and talk till 6:00 o'clock, the meeting will stay open.
The zoning, I'm just saying, it was supposed to start at 6:00, or 5:00, or whatever.
What did the body of the official notice say?
That's why I'm here, 5:00, but I'm just saying, it's confusing when it has two separate times on the same sheet.
Bernie?
I guess just for simplicity and clarification and clarity, these documents, this is the first document, then it'll be the main EIS adopted, and at that point, this document, which is the zoning that we did, could be tweaked, could not be tweaked, and just a suggestion I would make, and if it's possible, is that if the, the village decides that they wanna change whatever, would that be highlighted, and then held at one hearing that you're gonna change something to something? And that would be, you know, one hearing that would have it, and it would be clear rather than looking through the entire document, trying to guess it, what might have been tweaked, what might not have. That had always concerned me, how would we know? Jennifer, by the way, who was on the committee, did an excellent job of highlighting those things that we changed, so that when I picked up the document, I could flip through it and bingo, we changed this to that. And that was very, very helpful, and she was excellent to doing that.
And that's exactly what we're gonna do. Where we make changes, we will have the original one on there, and we'll highlight it in yellow, and on the bottom we'll put change.
I think that'll be very helpful.
This way you can see what it was, and you can see what it's gonna be.
I think that'd be very helpful to the public, and make it much clearer that, you know, this is, or whatever. Thank you.
And I heard that from Jennifer. Any other questions? Jay?
Yeah, Jay Powers. Chick, you had said that as you went through this, you, you may have seen areas that the zoning commission was unaware of, could you, could you tell us what those areas would be, that there would be environmental concerns?
Well, one of the things that we did is, beyond village zoning, there are regulations and statutes and things that need to be complied with, regardless of what the village does in terms of zoning. So, you know, the village can adopt any zoning they want, but the health departments, for example, if you have a redevelopment on a vacant lot, depending on the lot size, if it's over 40,000 square feet, you get an allocation of 300 gallons per day per acre in this zone. If a lot is less than an acre, you also get 300 gallons per day for that specific lot, even if it's less than an acre. And 300 gallons per day equates to a certain amount of development. Depending on what it is, a single-family home is 300 gallons, a dry retail store is .03 gallons per square foot of building, so it relates to about 10,000 square feet of building. And so these factors determine how much a lot will yield. We actually went into quite, quite a bit of detail on that in looking at sites that could potentially redevelop for something different under the new zoning, and quantified that, and that's a lot of the analysis that's in here. I don't, you know, I kinda get the sense that the zoning commission may not have been fully aware of that, but now, now we have established that Article 6 of the Suffolk County Cemetery Code establishes these thresholds, and it's gonna determine to some level what can happen on properties. Another example is, the DEC designates title and threshold of wetlands, and typically, you're not gonna get a permit to build on a lot that's 100% wetlands. And so, again, the zoning can be changed, but if somebody goes to use a lot that is, you know, in accordance with zoning, that is 100% wetlands, they're gonna have a lot of difficulty, if not an impossible situation, to get a permit to use that lot. Now, it's kind of interesting, because the status quo is that whether it's residential, commercial, or anything else, you're still gonna run into that roadblock if you go to the state to try and get a permit. So those are all things that, I think, again, benefit the village, 'cause now there's a full set of resource maps that are available, they're in GIS, that can be a living, breathing thing that's updated and can be referred to, you know, in all decisions in the future. So that's a couple of examples of the types of things that you're asking now.
Okay, thank you.
Tom?
Can I call you Chick?
That's fine with me, that's my nickname.
Yes, but I can't pronounce your last name.
Voorhees.
In the, in the DGIS, a lot of the maps, and especially the soils composition, there are errors in them, okay? There's certain areas that show as being filled, that are not, they're actually wetlands and things like that. Does that have to be put in writing as part of this process? Or should we just say, hey, this thing here is wrong, you go down and look at it, and it's, I don't know if it's a problem with indexing or what, but there's certain areas that, it's just, it's not right.
Well, you're welcome to provide those comments, we'd certainly like to clarify if there are areas that are inconsistent. I can tell you that we referenced the source of all the maps, and the soils maps specifically were digitized from U.S. Department of Agriculture information. The original Suffolk County soil map came out in 1975, and it was overlaid on an aerial photograph, and it was the conditions that were represented at that time. The digitized ones that we have now basically use that old information. To my knowledge, the soil map has not been updated since 1975. So if something was filled after that, it's very likely that it's not gonna be picked up on these maps. Also, when they digitized them, the whole process of geo-referencing may result in some sliding of things that may not be completely accurate. This is not the be-all and the end-all, I would call it an indicator, and whenever you develop a site, you really need to look at site-specific information. Because we looked at the entire village and 7,500 tax parcels, you're really not gonna have this site-specific tax parcel information. And that's one of the reasons that we outlined the things that will happen to implement this if somebody goes to develop. When I mentioned health department before in response to Jane's comment, they're gonna require a test hole on a piece of property, the DEC is gonna require an onsite investigation of wetlands, rather than relying on a regional map. These are just indicators. So while we can certainly update for the purpose of the FEIS any specifics that you're aware of, you're still gonna need to look at a specific site when you're doing something, you know, on the ground, as opposed to a regional study, which this is.
Alright, so for this process here, you want that in writing?
That would be fine, specific areas we can certainly recognize and, you know, make that a part of the update.
More?
I'm just confused, 'cause again and again, in the New York State law on zoning, it says a well-considered or comprehensive plan. So which part of this process is the well-considered comprehensive plan? I, I thought they had to adopt a comprehensive plan at some point, and I just, I've been through the meeting minutes, I've been through everything, we are still missing July 2012, November 2012, and December 2012 on the website of the meeting minutes, I've been complaining about that for two months now. But anyway, if it's not in those three months, I don't, I don't see where a comprehensive plan was adopted, and isn't that supposed to happen somewhere in this process? And if it hasn't happened, when will it happen?
Do you have a question, will it start, or can you kick it over to you?
Yeah, I'll take it, I'll take it from the beginning. More, I don't know, I think you've had this debate with Chris at the zoning commission, I know you, I don't know if you and I have talked directly about this, but I kinda feel that I've answered this a bunch of times, that.
I'm slow, answer it again if you don't mind.
Okay, sure, I'm happy to build the record to, for your purposes, to put that on. We've talked about this, a comprehensive plan, that there is no requirement for it under the law when adopting your initial zoning. And the courts, recently in a court of appeals case reaffirmed that exact position, that a comprehensive plan is not an absolute legal requirement, that it can be taken upon all of the items that go into the hearings, including EIS under SECRE, and all of the commission hearings, and all the information, anything else that they considered, including public testimony. So the need for an absolute comprehensive plan as an absolute requirement is absent from the law.
Correct, it says well-considered.
I'm not finishing my answer, I know you prefaced it with saying that your review of the zoning and state law indicates that it's required, there is no such a statement anywhere in the law. They mentioned the concept of a comprehensive plan, but there was no absolute requirement for it, especially in the initial adoption of zoning code. Not gonna add to that. That's Bernie?
One thing I had mentioned at several of our committee meetings was that the other boards, the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, that they should not take on hearings until they have certain other groups in, you know, approval, such as what Chick was referring to, the health department approval, and the DEC approval. It would waste your time, I mean, our village's time, on a hearing that's going nowhere if they can file an application without having those documents in place. If they need environmental DEC, they have to have it before they can get a hearing. If they need health department, they get health department approval before, and of course, that was very important, specifically, there is a test hole required for health department, that tells you exactly what the soil is, and exactly the place that the proposed tactic system is going. So it becomes less burdensome on our village to front all these hearings that are going nowhere, and it leaves the other agency that, agencies that kept dumping on us to do all the legwork for them. So let them do the legwork, and have our zoning board of appeals, or the town board, excuse me, village board, make those decisions based on that. They can still go whatever way they want, but it saves a lot of the parades at the hearings. Okay, that's, just looking to save time and money. Cheap stuff. Couldn't eat it. Is it typical to include such a large area as water, when you're evaluating all this stuff?
I have seen it in many instances, there are many municipal jurisdictions that include surface water.
Is there a, it's surface, it's not the land, but it's surface water, right? So we're not getting into this dongin' patent thing of the area.
That's a, that's a whole separate issue. And we're focused on the zoning, which, to me, is concentrated mostly on land area, because that's where you're gonna put the land to some use, and that's really the focus of this.
And would it be typical in this type of environment, you would include surface water?
You know, Town of Brookhaven has traditionally had surface water zone A1. It's, to me, it's meaningless, because you can't build a house there, A1 is 40,000 square foot lots per house, but that, that has happened. One thing that I'm just, real quick, I was remiss before and a little bit rude, my associate, Phil Malicki, is here as well, he was one of the authors of the EIS, he's taking notes, and I think everyone else introduced themselves, but you might be wondering why this gentleman's sitting up here. Sorry about that. That's Phil.
Just a little clarification on that, on that comment about the surface water. The area of the surface water, 'cause that came up at our committee hearing, does count into certain things, such as the square footage of the property. It does not mean you can use it, that's, Chick is very clear on that, you can't use it, but it counts into the original filed map, which says this lot is 8,500 square feet, 500 square feet is under the water, so you don't throw the 500 square feet away, you just can't do anything with it. It's like when there's a taking on a road by the county, that still counts into the commercial square footage for parking. So it's not usable, but it basically counts into, you're paying taxes on it, per se, and that's all that's about.
Okay, that it? Jay?
I have one question, Chick. The, in the zoning, the commission put in place a floating exo for development. When that, that, the planning board decides that they're going to have a floating exo, am I understanding you correctly that they- I understanding you correctly that there would have to be a different SECRE report for that? A separate SECRE report for that?
Yeah, I think that's kind of what we were talking about before, that, you know, zoning is a living, breathing thing. In this case, the X zone is a floating zone, and there are no specific sites identified for it, so it's really impossible to evaluate it. If and when someone applies for that zone in the future, a SECRE review would be done at that time. And whatever the record of decisions in the village, you know, that becomes a comprehensive plan over time, applies, you know, the village will consider that, as well as the specific site, and all of the factors that go into properly situating a floating zone. So that would be evaluated in the future.
Okay, thank you.
So just talking about that X zone, if, at Violet Cove, which is commercial, I guess, in the zoning, but if they wanted to do like gated condominium community down there, would that fall into the X zone, or would that be still under the commercial zone?
No.
No.
Chris, why don't you, why don't you explain what X is and why it's floating?
The X zone allows for, within this floating zone, it allows for the construction or the use of certain adult establishments. Now, you know, obviously you're asking, why would you want to allow that to occur? And the reason is that there's been previous Supreme Court decisions that have said that you can't in your zoning code expressly exclude those types of uses because it's protected under the First Amendment of the Constitution, including even strip laws. So the idea is, however, is that the court has left it open for you to regulate it in your zoning code, to put it in certain areas or to create it in a certain zone so that you can require the owner or the person who's going to create such an establishment to meet certain strict requirements in order to be able to use it, their property under that zone. So by establishing it as a floating zone, anyone who wants to establish that type of business has to meet the specific requirements in the, within the X district. And they're pretty stringent, and they're, the requirements are designed to ensure that the establishment doesn't have, you know, showy advertising, that it's not visible from the street or clearly visible by, you know, next door properties. So, you know, in that way, we can comply with Supreme Court decisions upholding the right, the first amendment rights of those types of businesses, while also making it, you know, making, ensuring that the community is protected from the ill effects of those types of uses.
It calls the triple X zone.
That's another euphemism for, yeah. It's not X meaning not defined, it's defined, but it's defined in a way that you don't want it in your, let's be frank, you don't want it in your downtown. So you make it in such a way that it, that it's manageable as a community as to where you're going to place it.
And from what I understand, being at those meetings with Chris, if you don't have a floating X zone, they can put it anywhere.
Anywhere.
This is the way you're controlling.
Oh, God.
For yours.
For your back end.
Oh, God. I'd love it.
I'm on.
One more?
The, I think the conflict with that X zone comes in the way it's written in the DGIS that's online, and I think you and I went through this stuff. It says, "In this zone, nothing can be built except a tattoo parlor or adult establishment."
Correct. That's right.
How does that square?
Come again?
But they're saying they can put it in the X zone anywhere.
Correct.
If it needs to.
What you're doing is you're defining, what you do in an X zone, and every municipality has this, you define the X zone by what business type would qualify for it. So for instance, if you came in with an application on any of the businesses that you just outlined, and say, "Look, this is, look, Mr. and Mrs. Village, this is where I want to put, in your village, I want to put this, what's one of the businesses that we put in the X zone?"
Tattoo parlor.
"Let's use that as an example. We want to put a tattoo parlor right next to the ice cream store, right on your business. It's a business, we want to put it there." Under your village code, as it's drafted now, no, it has to fit within an X zone, so you, because it's an X-defined business, you then place that zone, say, "Okay, we have a piece of property that fits all of those requirements for an X business zone." And this is, and we came up with the parcel, this is the parcel it fits on. When this parcel meets all of those criteria, then, as you saw, read the news today, Patrick did the same thing Monday night, they come with a parcel that that X business would fit on, then they have an application to the zone, to the board of trustees to change that zone from, whatever this might be, let's say it's B business or A, change this now to an X district zone. So that's, that's why we define the businesses that go in it, and then, once they find, when in it, they find a parcel that fits in, then there's an application to take that floating zone and set it down in a specific parcel.
To what, on a case-by-case basis?
Correct.
That's where, when, it says in the DGIS, it can apply anywhere, it means anywhere, but on a case-by-case basis?
Correct. If it fits within those parameters. If you come up with a parcel that meets all of those requirements, or setbacks, and shield and all those things that the zoning commission put in to control those districts.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Anne Petruso, who determines what areas would fall under this floating, the X, the floating X?
It's sent out in the zoning codes to what those parameters are. It would be, in the proposed zoning code, it'll lay out what those are. The zoning commission spent a lot of time figuring out what those parameters are, a certain acreage, a certain square footage, certain setbacks, those kind of things.
All other questions?
Well, Tom.
As long as you're insisting. The difference in the maps, I'm trying to be nice now. The difference in the maps between what the zoning group submitted and what's now on the DGIS, that's something that we address under the DGIS, or shouldn't that be addressed when you make changes to zoning?
It's going to go through the, it's going, that echo is going to continue through the whole process. It's not going to stop until the final hearing that the board has. Once this is closed, if there are significant changes in Chick's and Nelson Pope and Voorhees' opinion that on those final hearings have changed the environmental at all and need any kind of amendments, they make those decisions then. Small tweaks most likely are not because of the comprehensive nature and the size of this. So small tweaks probably will not change the overall analysis that, for instance, the village is, what, Chick, 95% A1?
Right, yes.
Right. So the tweaks are, you know, there are going to be some, but it's not going to be something that's going to affect 95% of the village, which you got to remember that too. You know, when they're looking at their environmental, and I'm veering a little into environmental consulting, but territory, but really, you know, you already have zoning. You know, you have the, you have maximum build-outs, you have zoning designations that this village is inherited from the Town of Brookhaven. So it's not like it's imposing it on a blank slate. You have a lot of build-out, you don't have a lot of vacant parcels still in proportion. You know, we don't have the Calverton or the old Drummond site in the middle of our village. That's, you know, where do you look at that? I mean, you know, Mr. Ofska deals with those kind of stuff, those kind of things all the day, and all day long, and the commission looked at that. You've got a history here. You've got houses, you've got commercial districts, you know. It makes their life as environmental consultants a lot easier because those build-out calculations or a lot of them are overlay to a large extent. Tom, may I ask you, I might have misunderstood your question. Was your question that we already made changes to the map that the zoning board gave us?
The difference between, and I don't want to start an argument with you, but the difference, the map that was accepted, let's say, as part of this is different than the map that's on the website now.
Is that correct?
Well, I can, I can say that we received a hand-colored, you know, mounted board and set to digitizing that. Basically, taking a tax parcel basis, applying, you know, all of the colors to a map to try and synthesize the information into a digital form. There were a lot of things that were unclear. Some of the colors were a little bit off, we thought some were business, some were industrial and they were really business. So we did go through kind of a process of checking it and trying to interpret it as best we can. I think what we have here is what the zoning commission intended. There was certainly, certainly nothing intentional...
Well, of course, that is it, Chick, but I mean, the fact is, there's a difference in the map. I mean, from my point of view, the change that occurred was good. I mean, I like the change that occurred, but it is different. Does that run into a problem later on?
I don't see a problem at all. I mean, to me, this is the official record that is before this board at this time.
So it's that, and it's not what the original zoning map?
I would say, I contend that it's the same exact map. I mean, I even went through the minutes and went through the specific parcels that there were some color issues initially, and I honestly say, I think it's, I'm pretty sure it's...
It's probably safe to say that when we look at it, we're going to use the map that was presented by the commission.
Yeah, and there are going to be some rounding off on a lot of the parcels. You know, there are going to be some rounded off corners on some, and, you know, that's just the nature of how this, this is why you have public meetings and public hearings and the input that we're going to have in the zoning, you know. They've got, like I said, they've got 97% down. 95% is already covered by the villages A1. So you're talking about just some of the corners, which, you know, will be fleshed out through public participation, which we want. You know, we want input on rounding those corners and changing some of those things.
And Moore had anything?
So I think the map, if I'm not wrong, and I looked at it, was there was 10 acres originally on Cranberry Drive West below Iris and west of Rafe, and at the final meeting, it was changed to 2 acres, and I believe on the map that's in the study, it still shows it as 10 acres, and I think that's...
Let me correct that. No, it was originally a large area, I don't know what it was, it was acres. The last zoning commission, they cut it out because we were able to give them the DEC maps that showed part of the area was wetlands, we're not going to do anything with it anyway. They cut it down, and then what's digitized now is only 16 lots. It went from that old southern part of that little peninsula by Cranberry, which was on, if you look at their map, now it's just 16 lots on the west side of Cranberry.
That's correct.
Are we revisiting zoning?
Yeah, you guys did.
By your request. You questioned the size of that area, we reduced it. That's how I remember it.
That's correct.
Because you asked.
We're not going to redo zoning.
No.
All we're talking, all I'm talking about is the...
The original map?
The original map compared to this.
Is this...
I mean, I like this map better because it makes it a smaller area, but it's not the same map. My question is, does that now give us a problem when people start coming up and say, "Wait a minute, that's not what I voted for," or whatever?
No.
Okay.
The commission takes, made the recommendation, you know, again, took 99.9% of it, those changes. There, I will guarantee you, there will probably be additional changes as this goes on. This board's going to have to have two more public hearings when this environmental section closes. There's going to be changes, I'm sure, that are going to come out. Someone's going to point out and say, "What about this? What about that? All right, let's get it." And then, once that gets set, I would almost bet my eye teeth, the very next meeting, we're going to have some applications going to come that's going to change some piece of this. And then you're going to talk about fence ice and hedges and things for the next millennium as this thing evolves, you know. And even the storms change our waterfronts and do different things. Things are going to happen.
Ready?
Regarding the map, one thing that I have been adamantly opposed to is split-zone properties. That was prevalent in Brookhaven Town. They'd just come down a road and everything was 100 feet, the back part of property, then you had people 50%, 75% if a property, and that would change a little bit of the...
Ms. Ofska, can I interrupt for a second? Does everyone understand what that concept means? Because from a lawyer's perspective, that is, it is absolutely devil-ing. That's what he just described. The level of detail that, you know, Tom and people put into this to talk about those corners, and the commission certainly did, was to avoid that. You know, and you get the worst zone that carries over to the better zone as a legal concept. So the Town of Brookhaven, in its wisdom, and again, because of the size of it, you know, your town is... Right, your wisdom, right? I'll use that terminology. Your village is four and a half square miles. The Town of Brookhaven is 343 square miles. Within that is the Smithhaven Mall, and zoning concepts that, at heights that are almost absurd for your village. So when they drew a 343-square-mile zoning map trying to make one size fits all, they ended up with that lack of level of detail that resulted in that. And, you know, if everyone understands a split zone, I mean, it's a nasty anachronism, so to speak.
It caused a lot of problems to an owner, caused a lot of problems to the boards, and so if the line goes down and it's a little sore-toothed, that's because the entire property is taken into consideration and not half of it or part of it, which is very difficult to distinguish on a, when the application comes in, it's B1.
Yep.
It's R1, whatever it may be, but it's not half and half, and everybody trying to get outguess, whatever. So I think that solves the map situation and makes for a friendlier village.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. No other questions? No one wants?
I just have one little thing, not to be picky, but if you look at the front page of the website, the planning board meeting on June 11th is at 6:00 P.M. Below that, it says, "The public notice of the board of trustees has no time in the headline."
The planning's meeting was at 6:00 P.M. That was a different meeting.
That was a different meeting. It's the one right above it.
Moore, are you trying to trick us?
No, I just said, I told you, I'm slow. I found it confusing. I did, I found it confusing. It sounds like planning board zoning is the same.
It was June 11th. Today is...
No other questions? I'd like to close this part.
It said June 11th, why is it still up?
A recommendation was...
Take it off. Why is it up there?
Like, make that recommendation, close the public hearing on GIS. Right, yeah. I just want to, I just want to announce what we're doing to, you know, we're closing, you see, to the GIS public hearing. We're keeping it open for, Chick, 10 days?
The official notice, was it 10 days?
July 15.
July 15, okay. Do we take any written comment up till then on this?
All in favor?
All right.
Close.
Excellent.
Thank you very much for your help. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Chick.
Yeah. Do we have any more?
I'll be the first.
I'd like to get an RFP on the web basis.
Yep.
You can get it out.
Yeah. Yeah. We have to ready.
Okay, reduce the resolution to go out for an RFP for another webinar?
Yes. Do you have anything?
Just June 11th is still up.
Yeah, June 11th.